Good evening and welcome to the March 15th study session, the City Commission. This evening we have just quarterly reports, and our first one is from our library. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council or Commissioners. I had one plan of action to speak with you about, and then on Thursday, a little thing called House Bill 2719 landed in my mailbox. I was alerted by a person from the Kansas Library Association who keeps their eye on legislation that affects libraries in Kansas, and I wanted to speak with you about that. I was out to Topeka on Monday, well, yesterday, got to testify before the committee, which was nice. There were three other librarians that testified. There was one person from a water district and one person from, I think it was Citizens for Progress, Kansas, something like that. Basically, the bill takes, the intent of the bill, according to the legislature, is to control the amount of property taxes levied against real and personal property by requiring any such taxes to be levied or approved by an elected body. Now, that doesn't really affect us because you are our taxing authority and you are elected officials. On the surface, that's the intent of the bill, and that's the way it was described by the gentleman who opened the meeting. But if you read the bill, and I'm not sure if you had a chance to, read the text of the bill, there are several items in here that will have a direct and dire effect on our ability to provide services. First part affects 121220, which gives the authority to create municipal libraries in Kansas, and it changes the word shall to may annually levy a tax. And I know that's one of those small differences that could make a world of difference if a city commission decided that one year they weren't going to do that. There is no alternative. There is no other means of saying, the legislation doesn't say what will happen to the library if that happens, if any city commission or any other board that's covered by 121220 would decide that one year they're just not going to fund the library. There's no recourse. I think you would either have to spend that year burning through any reserves that you have, or, again, the legislation is very, very unclear. It seemed like they went through the entire range of Kansas statutes and plucked out everything that referred to a non-elected board, dropped it in this legislation. So that's something that would affect us. Again, I don't think this Board of Commissioners would ever make that kind of decision, but that would be a possibility. That, the language would change forever, and that would always be something that any library director and everybody who runs the library here in town would have to face, or any other charter ordinance library. And the part that really nobody was paying very much attention to until I mentioned it is on page 24 of the bill, line 31. Each system board, now, there are seven different regional libraries in Kansas. They are created by the approval of voters in whatever number of counties that regional library serves or is designed to serve. Ours is Neckles. It's based in Lawrence. It covers 11 counties, and those voters already decided years ago that, yes, we want a regional library, and we will tax ourselves, and that's the way it's going to work. Now, those members of that board are not elected, they're appointed, but they do have taxing authority, and that is apparently where the issue is for whoever crafted this bill. There's still not an identified sponsor for it, and nobody at the committee hearing stood up to take credit for it. And another thing that they did in this legislation is include a limit on the levy of millage that a regional library could charge to three-quarters of a mill. And that legislation has apparently been on the books until 1999, when the legislature removed all of those caps, but it crept back in to this bill, and nobody had discussed that, and nobody paid attention to it at all again. And as soon as I mentioned that, there was a good 20, 25-minute discussion by the members of that committee about unintended consequences. Other aspects of the bill that were definitely very unclear, when it talks about the regional libraries needing annual approval every year, does that mean that every county in the 10 counties of the Neckles Regional Library have to approve it? Does that mean that they need to do it once, or do they need to do it every year? Does that mean that any other municipalities within this regional library, do they all have to approve it at once? And again, the legislation is just completely silent on many of these issues that are, that really pose a big problem. If this happens, if they recap the mill levy for regional libraries at three-quarters of a mill, Neckles is going to lose about 46% of their funding, close to $700-some-thousand is going to go away, which will really cripple our ability to deliver services. We not only receive a direct grant of $34,000 from them every year, they provide a statewide delivery service for material that we use to borrow in loan over 40,000 items. That costs us four cents per item. We paid $1,800 to send 40,000 items back and forth from our library and the other member libraries. The postage rate for a media mail now is close to $2.70 per item, which doesn't mean that would be our only alternative, but there's, I don't think there's anywhere in the world we would be able to find a more efficient, less cost, less costly means of sharing information, sharing materials back and forth. They provide our technology. They house the library, the servers that all the libraries use, and they also manage the technology and do all of the training. If that system would go away, we would have to buy software out of the box for our own use, and I did that back in 2008 in Ohio, and that was $100,000, plus $15,000 to $20,000 a year licensing fees. We spend $5,000 a year on that now, and we get tremendous service for that dollar. So again, the purchasing power, the power of all the libraries in the region cooperating, collaborating together, really brings great services, great efficiencies, great cost savings, and it would just be a disaster. There are some libraries in the Neckles region that almost depend almost solely on funding from Neckles. Some of these libraries have $18,000 budgets, and they get $7,000 of it from Neckles. They would literally cease to exist in any meaningful fashion. So I did remind them that our mill levy had not increased in 30 years, but if they pull this, we're either going to have to cut into our services and drastically reduce hours or staff, or we're going to have to come and raise taxes in our city, which is something that years of a bad economy wasn't able to do, but they can do with a stroke of the pen if they see this. So it did seem to me that there was a large crowd there. Most of the people, the full committee wasn't in there that day, but most of the members there were asking intelligent questions, and you could see the look on their faces as they began to dip into the details of this bill, that they really did understand ramifications that were not considered when this bill was cobbled together. There were board members there. Deborah Boickley came with us, and I'm terrible with names, excuse me if I, her name is Carol, I want to say Carol Ward. She's a Realtor. Oh, I'm so bad with names, I apologize.
Carol Page?
Thank you. Carol Page, thank you. I don't know why, I'm just terrible with names. So we had a community member, we had a board member, many libraries, there were friends, organizations there, there were people from all walks of life. There was a city commissioner from Bonner Springs named Cooper, who basically stood up in front of them and said, "Leave us alone, we're doing fine. You're just, you're messing with things you don't understand. You have no business doing this. Go away." And so he was pretty effective. The NPR did interview me after the meeting. I could send you that clip. I'm a media star now, but it was good to see that there were multiple media outlets there, and the room was full. They did bring some styrofoam, Kansas libraries, number-one things, but thank goodness it didn't turn into that kind of rally. But I do think that the point was made there. I have not heard that there's any further action planned. I'm trying to keep a real careful eye on it. The last thing that the chairman of the committee, Mr. Kleeb, said was that they were going to consider the, again, the unintended consequences, and whether or not this bill makes any motion or movement at all is going to be subject to whatever, whatever happens in the future. I haven't seen any additional hearings scheduled, so I'm just keeping my eye out right now. And I didn't know if you had any, if you've seen the legislation. I sent it out. I stayed home Friday because I didn't want to be accused of using work computer and work time to do politicking, so I sat in my living room. I thought it'd be done by middle afternoon, I could get to work. I wasn't done until about 11 o'clock that night, sending emails and answering phone calls. I was able to communicate with Henry Hungerbeeler, who is one of the Leavenworth County representatives to the Neckles Board that the governor appointed, and he contacted the governor directly so that there was some communication right, right to the top of the political chain there. Unfortunately, the words "abuse of the taxpayer" were included in the response, which kind of shocked me. Right now, in the state of Kansas, if you divide the total dollars spent by libraries by the number of materials circulated, it's under $5. It's like $4.67 to borrow an item in the state of Kansas. The mill rate for the Neckles Library is $5.67 per capita. Ours is about 34, but we only have 35,000 people in the city. So when you consider the tremendous value that people get for, in the Neckles region, for $5.67, I don't think this kind of legislation was very well thought out. And if it does pass, it's, it's going to hurt. It really is going to have an effect on our, we're the largest library in the Neckles region, and I know how it's, exactly how it's going to affect our bottom line.
Well, you guys are busy. I was there yesterday, and they were, there were just people everywhere. Our library is really busy. And, you know, not only our public school children, but our homeschool children, private school children, everybody uses, and adults, and so many adults. Deborah Boickley met with me this morning. She's a former superintendent of Fort Leavenworth Schools, and she is very, very strongly in opposition to this, and I hope that, you know, they'll, they'll look more closely at these bills before they think of passing them, so.
Yeah. Rommel tried to keep the Allies off the beaches. He knew if they got a foothold, they were dead meat, and that's kind of the way I think about this bill. I have no, I would really like to see it just stop in committee and not get any farther because it was obvious that it had been dropped so suddenly in the laps of the people on the committee, and most of them really didn't have a solid understanding of all of the details that were in there, and how all this affects not only regional libraries, but the way they work, that if it gets before the full house, it'll be even harder educational process to let people who aren't even on this committee understand what's going to happen if this becomes law. So it was, it was neat to get out there with, it was, I would not have been able to testify just as another example of the way the libraries cooperate. I didn't understand that they needed 45 hard copies of my testimony in an office in Topeka within 45 minutes, and I was sitting here in Leavenworth thinking, "I don't need that many speeding tickets." So I actually called a gentleman that works at Topeka Shawnee County, sent him the file. He printed it out and hand-delivered it. Again, just the way that we all work together as libraries, that was just another perfect example, so it got me on the roster of people to speak, and it was, it was nice to see there were so many people there, all walks of life.
Well, hopefully, it's done some good, the people showing up, especially in those numbers.
Well, there were two ladies beside me when their state rep sat down. They tapped him on the shoulder, and he turned around and said, "Hello, mister," I can't remember his name either, but they said, "We're just constituents of yours." And they were basically breathing on the guy's neck during the whole hearing, so it was obvious, a big turnout, and not just people from libraries, you would expect it either, so.
Couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
Are any of our local legislators on that committee?
No, they're not. I communicated with Representative Bradford and Representative Barton very early on. They both returned my calls on Friday, so they were very anxious and interested in hearing what the bill was all about and responded very quickly. Representative Bradford invited me to speak to the committee, and I was there in the room when the committee started, so he took time out of his busy day to show up there just to shake hands and introduce himself and kind of fly the flag on behalf of the library, which was, which was great to see.
And who sponsored the bill?
There is no sponsor.
I thought every bill always has a sponsor.
There is nothing that I could see.
And not needly.
Well, it can be sponsored by the committee, I believe. Is that?
Yeah, but usually there's someone.
Yeah, somebody.
I looked, I tried to determine it very early on.
And you said something about abuse of taxpayer. Who?
That was the governor.
The governor said this was abuse of taxpayer?
Yes, because there were, I think his position is, without elected members of boards, there's no voter control, that the people on library boards, appointed boards, are able to run wild and raise all these taxes, and the mill rate for the Neckles Library is 1.12, and again, that boils down to less than $6 in those 11 counties. And again, the service that, if you took $6 and gave it to every person in those 10 counties and said, "Here's your library money for the year," you couldn't buy a paperback with that. So that, those dollars multiplied by all of the services that we offer together, put over almost 2 million books in the hands of people who use us every day. Internet access, high-speed internet access, that costs nothing. They're, all of the library services that you can mention are dependent on that kind of collaboration and that sharing of resources. So I kind of hate to out the governor with that, with that email, but I, I've been in this business for 30-odd years, and I, that's one I haven't heard before. Also, wanted to just give you all a heads-up. National Library Week is coming in April, and we are, of course, most libraries look at themselves as firm defenders of First Amendment, free speech. Without those principles in place, we can do what we do. We provide information even on controversial topics that represent both sides. So we have invited two speakers to come to the library and emphasize freedom of speech and what it means in today's society, surrounding a couple of issues that are going on right now in Kansas. The student newspaper, the Daily Kansan, I'm not sure if you've been following that issue. There was a letter to the editor that was published. The student senate basically criticized the election that put the student senate in control of student government. They decided that they would use their bully pulpit to cut the newspaper's budget in half. And they, one of the, apparently throughout this long process of hearings and committees and trying to work this out, one of the student senate members said, "Well, you bit the hand that fed you." So the gentleman who wrote the letter is actually a media and journalism professor at the university and a lawyer in Kansas City, and he's, his name is Mark Johnson. He's going to come to the library and talk about freedom of the press in today's media, with, again, a great example of how that can be stifled if you say the wrong thing and someone takes exception to what you say. We're also hosting a gentleman from the Kansas, it's in the National Education Association's Kansas chapter, to talk about the ramifications of Senate Bill 56. I'm not sure if you have read that one or not. Librarians, teachers, other professionals have what's called an affirmative defense against charges of disturbing information that's harmful to minors, because we are librarians. If someone comes in to do research, genuine research on a topic, it might actually cross the line into what Kansas considers illegal. But as a teacher, as a lawyer, as a counselor, as a priest, as a librarian, you can share that information with a minor as long as it's for genuine educational purposes. Apparently, a sex education teacher in Shawnee Springs, a parent objected very strongly to a poster that was in an eighth-grade sex education class, so the senator from that area, whose name escapes me, basically wants to take away that affirmative defense from teachers. So if a sex education teacher or a teacher in any other subject talked about something that a parent objected to, and they could, and they could legally charge it with a crime, get a $5,000 fine and spend a year in jail. And that worries me because if that, if that kind of protection is going to erode for teachers teaching sex education in a public school, who's next? Well, people in my profession now, we subject to criminal penalties if we let someone, frankly, there are things in Time Magazine that, I've seen the poster that the complaint was about. There were two words on it in a row that apparently someone took great exception to, and I'm sure that the article about the topic included those two words in a row. So if I let a minor read this article, have the same words, am I going to get hauled off? Again, they're not talking about taking that protection away from librarians, but it is the same law, it is the same philosophy, that in our business, we have to be able to openly share information of all kinds with students who have genuine learning needs. And so this gentleman is going to come in and talk about, again, it's something that's happening right now in Kansas. Basically, it's, and it's an assault on our ability, teachers' ability, and potentially ours someday, to share information freely and openly.
Are you saying that maybe a freshman English class teacher assigned Catcher in the Rye, that teacher could go to jail?
Very much so, if that's, that being harmful to minors. There are many other books that would fall in that category.
Always complain. I think the attitude is protect them from school, but let them go on the outside and do whatever they want to do and read what they want to do.
That's the way society is acting like now.
I agree, that's the way society is, and it needs to be corrected, but I don't know if it ever will.
Oh, and the constitutional term that's thrown around with that is the chilling effect. In other words, as a teacher, this is a great book, I would love to teach this book, but if I'm going to go to jail, this one's just going back on the shelf. So you become afraid to express yourself, which was James Madison's greatest fear, that when he wrote the First Amendment, that, that the people are going to be frightened out of exercising their rights if we allow certain things to happen. So we did send a letter to both our state reps and our state senator about the bill. I don't think that that's gotten anywhere either, but again, that, these, both of these events stimulated us to think about freedom of speech during our National Library Week and to try to bring some people, and hopefully invite as many kids as possible, journalism majors, art majors, writing, people who want to get into the creative arts and communication. Know what the challenges are, know what you might face, know what your rights are. Hopefully, we'll have roomful of people, and hopefully they won't start throwing things or punching them. Any questions in general? I know that my quarterly report for the, for our library circulation, of course, won't be done until the end of the month, and our quarterly report on our progress on our strategic plan will also be available, and I will make sure that you get copies of those. And I'm glad to answer any questions that you have about.
Do you have the dates for these two speakers?
Mr. Johnson will be here on the 12th. We're still trying to work out an exact date with the gentleman from the education, from the Education Association. Cindy, our program marketing librarian is dickering with his scheduler to try to pick an exact date.
April 12.
Right. Yeah, the National Library Week, I want to say, is the 11th through the 16th.
Thank you, man.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next report is from Leavenworth County Development, Mr. Steve Jack.
Welcome. Good to be here, Mayor, thank you, and members of the commission. It's always a pleasure. Highlight of my month. Highlight of my day. Highlight of my evening, maybe.
Raise is going to start till next year.
We're powering up. I've got legislative issues of my own, so maybe we ought to just address those as well. Let me see, we got. We'll get it staged here. Thank you very much. The board, the LCDC board took a position on a couple of issues. One was legislative, a senate bill, so there was a legislative issue, and another one related to a vote on KCI, new airport. The first one, Senate Bill 463, was introduced by, as you were discussing individuals or committees, this was introduced by the Senate Ways and Means Committee. That would do three things. The one that's received the most headlines is sweep the tobacco money out of the children's fund, about $50 million, into State General Fund. We didn't address that. It's an important issue, but our focus is a little more narrow and focused on business issues and infrastructure. There were two of those. The first one was a $500 million sweep out of KDOT, which was the sales tax money out of the, what used to be an $8 billion program to fund roads and highways in Kansas, in T-Works, and sweep that into the State General Fund. And in a letter to Senator Ty Masterson, who's the chair of the committee, and all the members of the Senate Ways and Means Committee that does include Senator Fitzgerald from our area, we pointed out that every dollar, and it's been happening, it's been happening before Governor Brownback and this legislature came into office, but it's been happening at an increasing rate. Every dollar that you take out of that program means another day, or another month, or another year away from improvements to K5, improvements along K7, and certainly a new bridge. So there are, we're kind of at a tipping point now where KDOT has been able to do the projects that they originally intended to do, but now it's getting really tight and would, we're concerned, obviously, about the hit of $500 million out of the program. That's a half a billion dollars. The last thing is the elimination of the, that this bill would do, is the elimination of EDIF, the Economic Development Initiative Fund. And I had the pleasure when I was graduating from K-State in my master's program to work in Topeka in 1985, middle of 1985 to, to the end of June of 87, as an intern during the, we called it the EcoDevo session. So all three legs of the Kansas economy were depressed, oil and gas, aircraft manufacturing, and ag. And so in a bipartisan effort, the then-Kansas Department of Economic Development became the Kansas Department of Commerce with expanded trade and international functions. The organization, Kansas Inc., was created to study these issues ongoing. K-Tech was, the High Tech Commission spun off from the Department of Commerce and emboldened. And then, in the next session, 1987, the lottery passed and the Economic Development Initiative Fund, EDIF, was created. After the first, it could have been, I think, three years, 90% of the EDIF was supposed to be used for economic development. It was supposed to be an enhancement on top of a State General Fund base, but of course, since the lottery's done very well, there were ways to chip away at the State General Fund, so basically now, there is no State General Fund for all intents and purposes at the Kansas Department of Commerce. So it's fully funded out of EDIF. That's the programs, the job creation fund is all EDIF, staff salaries, travel, all that, EDIF. So this would, this would eliminate EDIF. There's no language that says it would eliminate the Kansas Department of Commerce, just like there's no language that says the tobacco money wouldn't be used for children issues, but obviously, the legislature's looking under every rock and stone to pull these targeted programs into State General Fund where they then will have control of the money.
So you're saying the lottery funds would be going to the General Fund now instead of Economic Development?
Yes.
Got it? Okay.
So anyway, we wrote a letter on Friday. This was the, our board took action on Thursday. Friday, we sent it out, and so far, no action has been taken on the, on the bill, so it's still there. But I think Ways and Means is an exempt committee, so even after turnaround day, it can come up, and there are other ways to gut and go, and as they call it, and take language from a bill and put it in another bill. So anyway, we're watching that. The economic development community and chambers of commerce pretty much unanimously came out against that, and we've expressed our concern about the EDIF and the sweeping of funds out of T-Works. Secondly, Tim Cowden, who's the new president and CEO, longtime employee of KCA DC, but now he's the CEO, reached out to communities, the 50 or so communities in the 18 counties that they serve and are members of KCA DC, to reach out to the city commission or city council in Kansas City, Missouri, to encourage them to put the new airport to a vote. It's not necessarily a, they haven't taken an official position on the airport, although I think, you know, we've talked about the Centennial Bridge being functionally deficient, but not structurally deficient. It's going to stand probably for another 20 or 30 years at least, but functionally deficient. And there are those who believe the KCI, as much as sometimes we do like the convenience of KCI, but there is probably the least efficient, certainly with security. They're more, they spend more on security there than any other airport in the country because there's so many access points. so many access points. So, we invited Mark Van Loe a couple of years ago to speak to our annual meeting, and I think some of you might have been there. He makes a pretty compelling case, but what Tim wants to do is for the city council to know that there are communities outside Jackson County in Kansas City, Missouri, that use the airport, and Leavenworth County and Fort Leavenworth are right at the top of that. So whatever they decide will impact us, and so we're just encouraging them to have that debate and to put that on the ballot. So those were two issues that were passed a week ago by our board. Now.
On the airport, there's no taxpayer money to build that airport. It's, and that's not why it goes to a vote. I mean, the airlines will pay for it, obviously, they can raise their airline tickets or however they do it, but it's not taxpayer money. A lot of people are saying, you know, the city council is going to spend $5 billion or $1 billion, whatever it is, and there's no taxpayer money involved in this thing.
Right. And.
But the city council can give the airport authority board, say, if you guys want to do it, do it, and charge higher landing fees or whatever, however they get the money.
Right.
The airport's owned by the city.
Right.
And I think that's where the people, the vote of the people.
Okay. But the city council could, in theory, just say, go without a vote of the people?
Yes, yes.
But no one, everybody treating it like a hot potato right now.
Right, right. And so I think the issue now is, will they have the support of communities in their own to even put it on the ballot?
Yeah.
Because apparently they don't, haven't gotten a clear enough signal from their constituency to move forward on their own. But you're absolutely right about the funding of it, and what the airlines who are pushing this say is, outside of inflation, the ticket prices and fees are not going to go up substantially. There are missed opportunities right now with the fact that there's no place to eat or very few places, or retail, so all that sales tax they're missing. There are places that they'd like to fly to, and a more efficient airport would allow them to add flights, and so, and the security, again, is the costliest in the country. Even much bigger airports are, spend less money than in KCI.
I estimate too that you could ask 100 people, you know, what about spending $1 billion, $5 billion, whatever number's being bantered around, and 95 to 98% of them would say, you know, we shouldn't be spending our tax money on that. Say, what if I could build that without spending tax money? I'd say 95%, say, yeah, do it. And it's just like a price chopper puts in a $20 million increase out there, or remodeling, I don't know if they're going to or not, is, you know, you can, you know, if they have to raise the prices on a loaf of bread, you know, three cents a loaf, or a quarter a loaf, you can choose to use it or not, but, you know, the big misconception is it's taxpayer money, and it's not. It's, you know, the airlines are doing it. And I just wish they'd take a stand one way or another, because this thing is just getting bantered around.
For the last couple of years, and it's.
It's not doing anybody any good. Either say, go, or no go. It is, I fly quite a bit, and it's the most convenient airport in the world to come into, and will be the best air, almost the best airport in the world. It'd be the worst airport in the world if you had a layover.
Yeah.
I mean, it is horrible.
Layover.
Taking off from there and landing there, like, but that's from a personal standpoint, and I also know that a lot of air freight, air cargo, and things like that, that they're severely hampered there compared to other airports, which is a big revenue enhancer.
Well, and we don't take stands on legislative matters and stuff. Formally, we certainly have never reached out to another city council in another state to encourage them to do something, but when I asked Tim Cowden about that, he said, no, the airport folks are encouraging that. They want to hear, they want the council to hear from communities in the metro area because they know, even though the city may be responsible for the airport, we all use I have brought my numbers, my percentages, and I'll go through these pretty quickly. Not a lot of surprises, and for the most part, good news. The unemployment rate, a year ago was 5.4%, now, at least in January, as we're comparing apples and apples, 5.1%, so we've seen a reduction there. The state also saw a reduction, 4.6% to 4.4%. I have asterisked those last two percentages and pointed out that these are non-seasonally adjusted. I'm not going to go through all the methodology about adjusting them for the season, but if you read headlines of 4.0% recently, that's the same thing as the 4.4%, but it was seasonally adjusted. And the only reason I'm using the 4.4 instead of the 4.0 is not so that we don't look as bad next to a 4.0, but rather to compare apples and oranges because, or apples and apples because the city and county data are never seasonally adjusted. So, when we receive that 5.1%, then I want to compare that to what the state numbers are. But acknowledging that the 4.0% for the state, seasonally adjusted, is tremendous. City of Leavenworth unemployment rate actually rose a tenth of a percent. However, you'll note that there are 247 residents in the city who are employed this year more than last year. So that's probably a more important number as that 13,340 continues to grow. I think just a few years ago, we were, gosh, well, for the city, we were probably in the 11,000 or 12,000 range. So that's good news. The balance of county unemployment rate dropped from 5.3% to 4.8, and there were 544 more people employed in the balance of county, Lansing, Baser, Tonga Noxi, and the rest of the county than a year ago. And totaled up, the Leavenworth County employment, the labor force grew by 730, but the number of employed actually grew faster, and that's good news, by 791. So right now, there are 34,118 folks that are employed, and that's, I think, a strong indicator that the economy is on stronger footing than it's been just a few years ago. In the quarter, since this is quarterly update, I wanted to mention that we did have Dr. Chris Keel at our LCDC annual meeting, and we had good attendance of about 100 people, and submitted our annual report to the membership. And we have a pretty good idea of what we're going to do in 2016 in terms of our marketing initiatives. External marketing, we're going to be doing the Business Expansion Journal again this year. We did, this will be our third year in a row, and I think maybe five or six years ago, we placed an ad. We'll do an ad, but there will also be an article about Leavenworth County. It is the May food processing issue, so we're going to be talking about cereal ingredients and McDonald marketing that packages frozen food down at Loring Underground, and Great Western that manufactures flour sifters, and so that'll be a good opportunity. It is also the Kansas issue, so we'll kind of get a little more bang for our buck to be in that issue. And it's very inexpensive, it's a $900 buy, so for a national publication, it's very inexpensive. KC Auctions, a Kansas City publication, is actually about three times as expensive as that. We've been in that publication the 10 or 11 years that the publication's been out. The reason we're in it, because it's our one area where we can reach out to young millennials and others who are thinking about moving here, and not just the businesses. It is used by KCA DC in recruitment of employees, and also as evidence that it's a cool, hip, wonderful, diverse metro area that people of all walks of life enjoy living in, and so we'll be in there again. That'll be released in November. So we've made that buy. And then we just started our real estate e-blast to the greater Kansas City broker and real estate community. We also do some internal marketing, and internal meaning more customers within the county. We have our LCDC newsletter, quarterly newsletter, and we are, we have a draft of that, so it'll be going out in the next couple of days. For the first quarter, the golf tournament is set for September 7th at Falcon Lake, and the VIP event is now November 4th, so save your dates for those two items. And then we're going to be doing something a little different. We've talked quite a bit about the regional impact of economic development, transportation tonight. We have been approached by Platte County, my counterpart in Platte County, about doing a joint Economic Development Council luncheon. So we will be inviting all of you, our board, our private sector members, but all elected officials as well, to attend a meeting that'll be over around KCI on June 3rd. So I think it'll start at 11:30 with registration, 11:45 we eat, and then the program starts at 12. Frank Weatherford from Trans Systems, since he and his organization are members of both LCDC and the Platte County EDC, will be talking about the Centennial Bridge and giving an update on that. And then we will have leadership at, from Fort Leavenworth, who will also be speaking about the importance of that institution on not only Leavenworth County, but Platte County as well. So we're very excited. This is the first time that she can recall, or I can recall, anything like this. We have invited them over for some joint initiatives, but to invite our entire membership, and I don't think we'll get 100 people like we did at our annual meeting, but if we got 20, or 30, or 40, they may have 125 to 150 there, so it could be a good group of, we're hoping for 150 to 200 people. There will be a cost to it, but we'll get that information out to you soon, but that's another heads up. 2016 marketing initiatives, events, as you know, we not only do print media, but we are out a lot networking. I color-coded these because I thought it might be interesting to take a look at, the ones in red are ones that were more focused on the Kansas City real estate community and brokers of real estate in Kansas City. So we've already attended the Collier's Economic Forecast Event, which allowed us to be exposed to about 200 or 300 folks that attended that. We were at a Team Kansas, the Big 12 event. Sometimes that event is targeted at the Kansas City audience, and sometimes they've actually brought in consultants from outside. This one was sort of a watered-down version of that first scenario. So Paul and I had talked about these opportunities. This was more Team Kansas folks, so we were more networking with ourselves, including Tim Cowden and the Kansas Department of Commerce. So I don't want to overstate the impact of that, but I don't want to understate that good relationship is important when we have a good relationship with KCA DC and the Department of Commerce. I'll be headed out in a week to Phoenix for a day meeting and event with CB Richard Ellis, folks out in Phoenix with about five other communities in the Kansas City area, and then Tim Cowden and Jill McCarthy from KCA DC. We have a Team Kansas event in April that will take us to New York and New Jersey, so we'll have a lunch and then a dinner, and then come back. And then those in the middle, in June, and July, and August, are more for national outreach, but they are done locally in Kansas City. So we asked them to come here. What's interesting is this SEDC, right in the middle of the annual conference, that's the Southern Economic Development Council, and it is, if you took a map of the US and put your finger on Kansas, and then drew lines down to Florida, Oklahoma, Texas, and everything east of there is a part of the Southern Economic Development Council. So we are the north, furthest northwest, that's why we're in the southern area. And there will be site location folks there the third day of that conference, and we are, Leavenworth County is a cosponsor of that conference, so we should get a lot of publicity out of that. And then there'll be about 300 peers from those states as well, but we're more interested in those site consultants that will be at Sporting Park on that Tuesday night, August 1. And then we've got KCA DC Real Estate Council and the SIOR Development Day in September, and a couple, reception, and then the KCA DC Annual Meeting that we've done jointly with you all in the past. Some of the projects we're working on, recruitment retention projects, we had a couple of call center projects. Call Center 1 needed 10,000 square feet for 75 to 100 employees. They visited two Leavenworth properties. The project now is, I don't know whether to call it dead or on the back burner, but at this stage, the project, we didn't lose it to anybody, it just didn't go, it didn't move forward because the company, which is a southern company, had purchased another company who has a presence and call centers in the Midwest, and so they're reevaluating. Wouldn't surprise me that in six months or a year, we get another call, but it also wouldn't surprise me if we don't hear from them again. There's another project that was looking at 20,000 to 25,000 square feet for anywhere from 150 to 300 employees, and we sent information on First City Center to the site selection group. And private school was looking for 12,000 square feet. The basketball court seemed to be more important than the first 6,000 square feet because they needed 60 to 100 feet clear span, and the First City Center has posts that are, I think, 35, 45 feet apart, but they needed 60 to put a basketball court in there. And they were looking at old Steinmarts, old Walmarts in the metro area, were having that problem, getting that clear span. Project Blue, Paul and I met with the client on March 3rd, and then Project Lexington, retailer, is looking for 20,000 square feet on K7, so we're working with the city on that.
Real quickly on the school, maybe Nancy, maybe you know, St. Joseph's, used to be St. Joseph Elementary School on Osage. Now it's all part of Xavier, and they're one location, one Catholic school system. Used to have St. Casper, St. Joe, IMAC, and Sacred Heart. Now they're finding one. The school there, built in the 60s, I'm wondering, is it even used anymore? It's not on the tax rolls, and obviously, if it goes in private school, it wouldn't be on tax rolls anyway, but you know.
It's not used as a school.
Is it used for anything?
It's office space, so I believe.
But I think it's kind of like temporary, and somebody uses it a day here, a day there.
Yeah.
But there, I mean, there's a school with a gym, and probably, you know what I'm talking about?
Tell me.
It's on Osage between 7th and Broadway.
Okay.
Part of St., it's part of St. Joseph Church, and that's, used to be St. Joseph School until they combined, and that's just a thought.
St. Joseph's, who?
Roman Catholic.
Yeah, archdiocese in Kansas City.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Rick Geraci may know the details on that.
I don't know what they have.
Yeah, I'm thinking they just use it temporarily.
They also have the school over by Immaculate Conception, too, on 5th.
I don't think it has as big a gym. St. Joe had a.
Because that's why you used to have CYO basketball and things like that.
Right, that's right, they did, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
I'm sure they would love it.
Yeah, it all depends, yeah.
Well, and Tonga Noxi just. Well, and Tonganoxi just sold their elementary school.
Yeah.
For $72,000, and it's a big, big property.
We sold old junior high back in the day that was on the school board, $15,000. And they paid $14,999 too much?
Was that a?
Oh, you're talking about an albatross.
Well, it seemed like a good deal to them. Heatron was acquired by a Swedish company. You may have read that in the paper, NIBA. And I asked my wife, who works for Department of Commerce, does international, I said, "Now, this could be a negative, it could be positive, or it could be benign, right?" And she goes, "Hmm, it's probably going to be a positive, because there are a lot of European companies that find it easier to acquire a company rather than to build a new facility and start from scratch." And this is a successful company, Heatron, and so what has been told us by the company, it should be a positive. How much of a positive, I'm not sure right now.
Will they continue to use prison labor, or they do that?
I don't think anything, they left H.B. Turner and local leadership in place.
Okay.
So, we're assuming that, that's another indicator, if they bring in their own people or whether they leave folks in place and just use this as a way to grow in the country. So, but we'll be working with Heatron to, anything they need. Obviously, this is, it could be very exciting for the company. Great Western, you've seen some construction out in front, and hopefully soon, it'll be going vertical. They're adding almost 9,000 square feet to the front. That will be office space, and then the office space that's currently in there, at least some of it can be moved and create a little more room for production. They've already added 15 new jobs. They've been around 100 for the last several years, and now they're at 115, so we're very excited about the Schrader's and Great Western's expansion. Grinders High Noon, I told this to just about everybody, and so I'll tell it to you, and your city managers may have told you already, or you may have heard it from the guys at Grinders, but they had 41,000 sales tickets in the first three months of operation. And a sales ticket could be one person buying a beer or a hamburger, or it could be a party of 20. That's tremendous. And that means that a few hundred thousand people will go through that in the first year, Grinders. So, we're very excited about the impact they've had on the downtown. Serial Ingredients on the other side of town, promised 32 jobs from the Port Authority, set aside the, and you all, this commission vacated that road. That allowed us to give them 3.2 acres in return for 32 jobs. The baseline was 104. They've added, well, they're now at 131, so they've added all but five of those jobs that were supposed to take five years to do, and they're still hiring. So, I come before you as the HR person, representative of Serial Ingredients, because they could be at 145 if they could find an industrial maintenance mechanic, lead person, and then the starting folks out there. So, they're looking for people. The training wage is $13 an hour. You work for an employment agency during that period. The period could last for as much as 16 weeks. When you're hired by the company directly, your starting wage is $14 an hour. It's $15 an hour for the night shift, and all the employees are offered a single basic health plan at no cost. So, the company pays 100% of their health insurance. You must be able to lift 50 pounds, so. There you go. I have tried to spread the word. And then, I will go back to the Serial Ingredients. I was telling the story of Serial Ingredients' expansion to the new Commerce Secretary, Secretary Antonio Suave, who seemed genuinely interested in it, and I told him they were the 2009 Kansas Export of the Year. He wants, expressed some interest in visiting it, and he will be coming to visit Bob Hatch and meet with him on May 16th. So, that's exciting, anytime you get a chance to show off your community. I'll just go through these real quickly. You have them in front of you. We're in pretty good shape. The green means we're right on target or ahead of target. We still have not written a training grant yet, nor have we done our first classroom to career event. That will take place in, let's see, at the VA, so it'll be health occupations related. And then the print, digital ads and stories, we purchased two of them, but we haven't done the creative, and the magazines haven't come out yet. We're attracting 422 visitors per month to the LCDC website. We have about 17 prospects and leads so far, and we're pretty much on track. We hope to increase our private sector funding. Last year, we set a goal of 44,000 to raise from the private sector. We reached 47,500, or 700, 44,700. This year, our goal is 46,000. We think we'll be at 48,000. So, compared to where we were five or six years ago, we're about $12,000 up, and that's a good indicator that the private sector, the business community are, want to be partners in this effort to grow the community and grow the county, so. That's my report. Sorry, I probably rambled a little bit, but hopefully.
It's good to hear.
It was the information that you wanted to hear.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Our next is a report from Convention and Visitors Bureau, Ms. Kristy Lee.
Morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Good evening, Eric. I needed to see you. I've got a.
This is your first one?
This is my first one. I've been on the job now just over two weeks, so.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. I'm very happy to be here, so. Just wanted to kind of give a quick update on that. Please, if you have any questions or that, or would like to see it go in a certain direction or something, please let me know, and we'll see what we can do. But so far, for the social media and that, I've kind of come on board and been changing and updating most of the websites and the social medias to the address here at the, at the city offices and that, and changing the phone numbers and trying to get all of that updated and that. With that being said, average daily impressions on our Facebook are about 263, and we currently have over 3,247 page likes on that, on our Facebook. Seems to be going really well, and sharing as much as we can with other sites and that to hopefully increase some of those likes. One of the, at the Kansas Tourism Conference, I know one of the people said that likes aren't as important as they used to be, just due to the fact that you can now boost your own, some of your own things that you post on website and that, you can buy some other impressions on other sites and that. So, we'll probably be looking into doing that also. Twitter following, we have 391 followers, and we are following 649 people, averaging about 1,740 tweets between January and now, and we've had over 8,600, 8,600 impressions since January, so that's actually going pretty well. The last one that we just, when Melissa Etheridge was in town and that, we received a ton of stuff on that, because she sent a tweet directly to the Leavenworth CBB, so that just went gangbusters for us, so that was really good. We've received quite a few new followers from that alone. Pinterest, we're about averaging 78, eight average daily viewers on that, with daily impressions of over 164. Website, we're averaging about 3,757 unique users, and they are accessing over 11,000 page views for us, so that's also pretty good. Our website's definitely being used. I wasn't able to find out how the percentage of mobile views on that, but hopefully I'll be able to report on that at our next one, how many are, how many people are actually using our mobile or cell phones to access the webpage, so I'll get that updated for you, too. Some of the conferences and appearances that are right around the corner, Fort Leavenworth Parade is a Saturday and that, so already been in contact with them, and we'll be spending the morning out there. It goes from about 10 to 2 in the afternoon, so we'll be sharing a booth with the Fort people there, and so hopefully, it should be go pretty well. It's always been a really good day, and I've attended it when I was with some previous jobs and that, and it was always a fun event. Have signed up for the African-American Travel Conference in Cleveland, and that's on April 21st through the 23rd. And we'll be also attending the Kansas Sampler Festival, which is going to be in Winfield this year. The last two years, it was in Wimigo, and it was breaking all kinds of records. It was the smallest town, but it was the largest number of people that attended the conference. There was over 12,000 people for the two days, so hopefully, Winfield can give them some competition there, but 12,000 people again would be great. Our e-newsletter that we send out, we have 180 subscribers, and hopefully, we'll be able to start increasing that at some of these, especially the Winfield Trade Show. We'll hopefully get some new followers and that, and get some more people signed up for our e-newsletter. Visitor Guidebook, so far, 49 direct inquiries mailed out, over 6,902 distributed to local retailers, our hoteliers, and organizations. Print advertising, so far, we've done the Travel Kansas Magazine, and this is the same magazine that last year, we were on the cover of it with the carousel, great, that was awesome. So, I'm currently also working on a marketing plan and that, so trying to get a plan, of course, and get a handle on the budget and that, and we're going through some municipal training on that for, to actually be able to pull some reports yourself and that. So, still kind of working on that and tweaking some of the reports there to, so we can, so I can see where I'm at as far as the budget goes. Some of the memberships that we're involved in are listed on your report there, Boomers and Groups. Most of these are all group tour oriented and that, so I think moving forward, hopefully we'll be able to branch out into the small meeting, small meetings market eventually, too. So, let's see, group tours, so far, reunions, we've had over seven, or we've got scheduled seven day tours coming up, and one's going to be overnighting in August. And also just, I didn't know if you've been aware of it or that, but the Leavenworth Soccer Association is bringing back the prison break tournament, October 7th through the 9th, and they're expecting over about 7,000 people here for that weekend, so it's going to be.
That's fantastic.
Yes, we're trying to get the word out there, I guess, because the last time they held it, it wasn't, some of the facilities weren't aware that they were in town and that, so they might have gotten a little overrun, but hopefully, if we get the word out there, it'll be, it'll be good. Some of the other meetings that we've got booked that's, that are coming up is the KCRDA, which is the Kansas City Regional Destination Alliance. We're going to be hosting them here on April 6th. The Quilt Meeting is booked for April 9th, the Rotary District Conference, we have a meeting with them on Monday, and they're saying about 200 Rotarians will be here that weekend, and then plus family and friends and that, so they're figuring anywhere between 400 and 500 people for that convention or conference. Tour Kansas will be here on June 9th. Tour Kansas is a group, basically, it's a state group. I think right now, they have about 102 or 3 members, so it's going to be other Convention and Visitors Bureau and some hoteliers coming in for that meeting from across the state. Any meeting, we usually have probably about 60 people that attend those meetings, so that'll be a nice meeting to have here. The KCKCC, the Community College will be here October 18th, and then the Kansas Museums Association is going to be holding their annual conference here on November 2nd and 4th. So, some pretty, pretty good ones coming up. Some of our promotions that we've got going on, the Veterans, Vietnam Veterans Traveling Wall is going to be here October 26th through 30th. So, I'm currently working with everybody, and at tomorrow morning's staff meeting, we'll probably try and let everyone know some of the logistics that we're going to be facing, get everybody on board, fire chief, every, you know, parks and recs, so it's going to be a collaborative effort on that. It's going to be a big, a big event. Some of the things that I'm looking, looking ahead, as far as getting some quarterly meetings rescheduled with our CBB ambassadors, and then also the CBB Committee, which is appointed and that, start meeting with them again regularly, and then also try and meet with the hotel managers and that, and just sit down and visit with them and see what they've got going on, and be able to share some things that they want to see done also. And then getting out in the community and meeting some of the people and the stakeholders, getting involved with Main Street and the Chamber and other organizations. I have a meeting with the Main Street Lady tomorrow in reference to one of the conferences that are coming up. So, it'll be my first meeting with Wendy, so I'm looking forward to that. And then, of course, on top of that, moving some of the files and furniture from the Chamber Office over to this office, and then some of the files that are in that office to the basement and that, so it's going to be a process of the next few months, getting everything squared away and set up in that new office and that, so. And at the same time, looking at the brochures, our group travel planner, some meeting travel planner, goal and budget planning and that, there's just a lot going on right now, and kind of a short and sweet report for this time, but hopefully, in the future, I'll be able to do probably a PowerPoint presentation or something and bring you some, you know, pretty big, or bigger numbers and that, so.
Since you came from another CBB, right?
Yes.
What are your impressions of Leavenworth and the CBB here?
Oh, this is, it's, it's great. I mean, in fact, today, I was basically, I was going through all the files, trying to see what's been done and what's, where it's going and that. I believe the, the new brand that was rolled out a year and a half ago or so, I think, is really, really nice and that, so I'm looking forward to seeing what kind of return we're going to have on that. But the community so far has been awesome, and I'm just really excited to be here and that. There's a ton of potential. I mean, there's just, it's amazing, so I can't wait to really dig in and get involved.
Good. Perhaps we'll be good.
Anybody have any questions?
No. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think Paul had something he wanted to talk to us about.
Yeah, I spoke to the mayor about talking about a legislative item tonight that popped up today, that I'd actually recommend the commission endorsing, which is something we haven't heard a lot lately. This is House Bill 2609. It's, it's a property tax lid bill, but it is by far the most reasonable, flexible, and city and county and local government elected officials-friendly version of the tax bill that we've seen. I'm going to go through a couple items about the bill that have been changed from the version that first appeared last year and has been circulating this year. The first point being that the CPI, which has been the measuring stick thus far to the cap on property tax, has been replaced with the Municipal Cost Index, which is an index that more closely relates to expenditures that local governments make. The CPI, using that as a gauge for local government doesn't make sense. The Municipal Cost Index is a much better reflection of what it is that we do. The next item is the vote of the public to increase the property tax or the amount of taxes you can collect from the property taxes. A vote is not required if it's above the Municipal Cost Index unless 10% of the electors of the city or county submit a petition. So, if people in the community, 10% of the electorate, would like a vote, then they could submit a petition, and that would force the vote. So, the vote's not automatic, it's if 10% of the electorate petition for that. The next, the next item is it adds four exemptions to what is calculated in assessing property tax, the property tax levy. The first one is any increase in property tax as a result of the expiration of a tax increment financing district. This is important to us going forward, because when, in 20 years down the road, I know it seems like forever, but when those properties between 4th and 7th, in Metropolitan and Pawnee, once that TIF district is expired, all of a sudden, that, that tax rate, that full amount, will then come to the cities. Well, if that brings in more than what the Municipal Cost Index or the CPI would bring in, then that would not trigger a vote. It would be, it would be allowed, if that makes sense. Does that make sense?
I'm sure it does. Do you have to hear it three more times?
Yeah.
It also exempts expenses due to employee contributions for workers' compensation, unemployment insurance, health and healthcare costs, employer retirement. employer retirement and pension programs. So if the city was required or if the city needed to increase property tax dollars, added warm dollars, because healthcare costs have increased, as we're seeing now thirteen percent, fifteen percent, those costs would be exempted from, from what would be counted as what you raised your property tax. If that makes sense. The next one doesn't apply to us, applies to counties. And the final one is if that increase was related to a federal, state or local disaster that was declared by a federal or state or municipal governing body. Should there be a, you know, tornado or something that comes through the city and we required extra funds to rebuild roads, rebuild sidewalks, that would not be in the calculation. So it gives greater flexibility. Okay, also exempted from it would be, and the library is a good example of this, if a city or county levies taxes for the financing or budget of any political or government subdivision that is not authorized to levy taxes on its own behalf. So say that the commission decided to increase the mill rate. We currently levy three point seven five mills for the operation of the library. That's, that was a decision of the governing body. If they chose to change that to four point seven five, the extra money brought in from that would not count against the city as far as its relation to meeting the CPI or the Municipal Cost Index. So that would be exempted from the calculation. And finally, in the key to the bill, the governing body of any city or county may exercise Article twelve, Section four of the State Constitution of the State of Kansas and home rule out of the property tax lid restriction. So you, as five elected officials, could pass an ordinance that exempts the city of Leavenworth from the property tax lid in total. It allows the elected leaders to decide, one, do we leave it in place and have the requirement of ten percent of the electors to trigger the vote? Or do we, as the elected leaders of Leavenworth, want to home rule out of the property tax lid?
Is this the same bill that we voted unanimously last year? That's a Senate bill, wasn't it, on property tax?
Yeah, the counter to this in the Senate is Senate Bill three sixteen, and it doesn't include any of what I just talked about.
Which one trumps, which one, Senate Bill three sixteen or House Bill?
Well, here's the problem, the tax lid is already law. It takes, we unanimously voted as a commission to oppose the tax lid. It passed, it's law. The Senate Bill three sixteen moves the date up to July first, twenty sixteen. So it simply moves the date of something that's already in place. This replaces that and includes these, the concept that I just explained.
So that would amend that. But the one, it, when it passed last year, when does it go into effect?
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen. And Senator Fitzgerald said that he's, did he tell you that he's?
Yeah.
Because he tried to, he got five votes to put it in effect last year, July first, two thousand and fifteen.
Sure, so we opposed, we opposed, the commission opposed Senate Bill three sixteen this year to move it up to twenty sixteen. I sent that correspondence to our, to our delegation. I did receive a response from Senator Fitzgerald. And he said that he understood there were logistical concerns with the bill and he would not support twenty sixteen. But twenty seventeen was more, so it would still move it up, but it would be twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen, no.
Because there are a lot of issues. This bill would amend the bill currently in, in effect with all these added exemptions and changes.
Do you, you know, with the cities and the counties or whatever legislative bodies that opt out, I would suspect ninety percent of them are going to opt out. Because I think every city and every county in the state, in every chamber in the state was against this. Because they said it was an overreach.
I believe that there's only one county on record in favor of it. I believe it's Sedgwick County.
Okay. And, okay, then a hundred and four counties were against it. I think every city that's been on it was against it. I would see that every one of them would, or ninety-five percent will opt out of it and that bill is the paper tiger. Nothing. I'm just guessing.
As long as the home rule stays in the bill.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why I'm curious, is this the final reading of it or is it still?
It's been through committee twice. Had two hearings and it has another hearing on Thursday at three thirty. That's when this, when this bill comes up.
Yeah.
You know, it still keeps the property tax there. And in the ordinance process, you have to pass a charter ordinance, so you get the sixty day protest period. In theory, the elected leaders have then the chance to hear from their, the electorate as to what they would like you to do.
What are you asking for us?
This bill, as it's presented, this is what we have to work with. Right now we have three sixteen or we have this. This definitely gives elected officials the ability to control the only taxing stream you really have control of and how to run your community. The city of Leavenworth hasn't raised their property tax mill in fifteen years.
Right. No, we've lowered it.
Well, yeah.
Forty percent.
Right.
Yeah.
And has, I think that this would say to our public, our, our people, if you don't like what we've been doing, then tell us, but otherwise trust the local elected leaders as you have for the last fifteen years. Keep your taxes low.
Yep, I agree.
So I would ask for support to support this legislation currently before the House.
I would suggest that we support it, because it's definitely better than the Senate bill. But my concern is that the charter ordinance area stays in it, that we can charter out of it.
It could, it could end up being a compromise. This is a starting point on one side and the Senate bill is a starting point on the other side and then coming together. But at least there are a lot more flexible positions as far as exemptions. And there is a requirement that at least a percentage of the electorate petition to put something on the ballot. So should there be an egregious increase in property taxes by a city, it wouldn't take that much to trigger a petition to trigger an election.
Right.
So you would have, as a voter, you would have a means to stop some out of control that you felt property taxes.
Sounds good.
So you need a consensus?
I would ask for it.
I'd like to speak to it. I'm not willing to give a consensus or give an eye to a consensus. In the last three or four weeks, I know City Manager Kramer's been doing his job. He's come to us electronically and telephonically saying, you know, we've got some hot issues, the library issue, the rocking of the T, uh, T-Works, et cetera. Can I get a consensus, can I get three of this, I can send this letter. I think government, people that we represent want transparency in government. And the only way we can get transparency in government is we take a vote on it. And I think this thing waits till next Tuesday and these letters that we're asking for support, we vote on it. We need to stand up and be counted, each one of us, that we're for or against. Consensus is nothing, doesn't tell our constituents where we are. I will not give a consensus on this. I will definitely vote on it next Tuesday. And I'll vote on every one of them, or we can run a special meeting at every study session and say, well, we can't do this until, you know, we don't have another regular meeting until next Tuesday. Or, you know, some future Tuesday. But ninety percent of the time in study session, we have a special meeting on it. I say that we're vote, that each one of us has voted up or down, and I suspect it'll go up. People need to see where we stand. There's three letters that went out in the last month. And the press has no idea that we went out, not that we're hiding it from them or anyone else. But, you know, no one knows where we stand on it. And so I, I'm not willing to give you consensus.
But what would you do, Mark, in the case that the timelines don't fit with our meetings?
Well, we heard one on the library. We had a letter that came out the other day. You know, we need this because the committee's meeting Monday. We need a consensus. They're not taking a vote. They can wait. We should have put that on a special meeting tonight and that we can vote on it. But the committee is just hearing it. They are not voting on it. We still have time to write that letter before the House votes on that. For example, the library thing that Library Director Matt was telling us about. And I know last week, City Manager Kramer asked me for, you know, would you be for it? I said, oh, I want to vote on it. And we have time. None of these are emergencies. They can wait until we have the time to vote. And we can vote every Tuesday except for the fifth Tuesday of the month when we're not here.
One, one point that I would bring up on this is I don't think a lot of these, you want to rely on getting your information in before the vote is taken on the floor. A lot of times you want to get your information to the committee so it doesn't get out of committee. We had a bill on seizures where the state would take half of the drug seizure funds that we use for MDTs and body cameras. That was able to be stopped in committee. A lot of that was because local law enforcement, including our own, submitted testimony and it was heard in committee and stopped in committee. Once it gets to the full body, to a lot of people who have not read the bill, who have not heard the testimony and who will not read the letters because they're voting on something that didn't come through their committee, that's where I think you get, it's a little dangerous to rely on getting in before the full committee votes. I can try to do, timing wise, anything that can or has a committee hearing after our commission meeting, I can try to bring for a vote, but there are certain things where there are committee meetings before the next time we can vote. It's up to you, I'll do whatever, whatever the commission direction.
We're on television. I mean, you know, we are a public body, we are having a meeting as far as, I, I agree with Paul on this timeliness issue.
Why wasn't that, why didn't we have a stud, a special meeting tonight? Like we do almost every study session. We have a special meeting, why didn't we have it tonight? I want to vote on this. I want to vote on it.
I talked to Carla about this, our city clerk, about adding an item to agenda that requires a vote. And this did come up last Thursday, but we don't have a paid lobbyist. And a lot of this stuff gets to me through the league and the league takes a day. I didn't, I didn't know about this bill until this morning. So by the time we put something together, we can add an agenda item at the meeting that we can vote on. There's just some mechanics involved, but we can certainly do the best we can to try to get something faster. But I get this as fast as I can and turn it around.
I guess I don't understand, I understand what Mark wants, but I still don't understand it. When we give a consensus, it's technically not a vote. It's giving you permission to send a letter in our stead. And this, all this does is state our position. It doesn't control anything. It doesn't change the amount of money anybody's going to get charged or, or anything. It's nothing to do with taxes, that has to come to a vote. But I, I don't see a problem with the consensus.
Okay, we had some consensuses that were done over the phone or emailed, like two or three of them. I don't know what the results of the consensus was. I don't know who was for it, who was against it. No one else does either. City manager may know, press doesn't know, the people don't know. Yes, we're on TV, that's done on email. That's what I have a problem with. That's, and I, I, I think if, you know, if three of us, if three people nod their head, obviously it is. But we don't know where we stand without a vote. There's no record besides a consensus was reached by the commission. The consensus doesn't say Commissioner Bowder, Mayor Dedeky, Commissioner Rainey, Commissioner Prisinger nodded yes, it's just a consensus. And I think people need to know where we stand. And I, and I do also understand there may be an emergency now and then, but the last three weeks, I mean.
What about going ahead and doing our consensus and then recapping it at the next, immediate?
And put it to a vote. And, and put it to a vote, is that what you're saying, sir?
Well, I wasn't thinking a vote, I was thinking the consensus to get to, to get, like Paul said, to get the letter going. And you're concerned that people want to know, the paper wants to know what we've done in our off time and then sit here and explain it. Well, we had a consensus on this and this, she voted, she voted, I voted, you voted, you voted.
When, voted or consensus?
The consensus, yeah.
But a consensus is not a recorded vote. Consensus is the commission, a majority of the commission had a consensus.
Right.
With no names attached whatsoever, whether you're for it or against it or mute, mute on it. There's no record. That's where I think, Stan, you know, I think of these things in the last three weeks. And I do believe you've got a consensus, you've got enough to write the letters, but I.
I just don't see a need for a vote.
I do.
I mean, I don't.
Not on this issue, I don't either. I think we should go ahead and give a consensus for this.
That's kind of my idea too, to be honest with you.
And I agree, some, Mark, some of the other things that have come out lately, I don't, I don't want to do a consensus on. But with this, with this, I think we should go ahead and do it.
I agree.
I wish our fifth commissioner was here, just so she could have some input. But sickness says that she's not, so. It sounds like you've got a consensus to stay with a consensus until we bring us back to the study session and discuss it. Is that okay, Mark?
Well, no, I didn't get a consensus.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, no, I, I don't have any problem with that.
Do you want to speak to it during the study session is what I'm asking?
Well, I'm kind of speaking to it now, I think, well, I'd be curious then on Senate Bill four sixty-three, when they're taking five hundred million from the T-Works budget, you ask us for consensus. Did you get a consensus, Dr. Riley? And since you had to do it individually, who said yes, who said no?
Just for people watching, when we do do it on email, the commission is only allowed to reply to the city manager to maintain Open Records and Open Meetings Act. So it comes to me for a consensus.
So who, who, I mean, so, I mean, we, when we're here, we know who's nodding our head and we're on TV. But when we do these things electronically, he sends it to all of us, as he should, but we can only respond to him. We can't respond in group because that becomes a serial meeting.
Right, right.
But what I'm getting at, Paul, is the letter doesn't have any impact on a vote.
He says, City Commissioner of Leavenworth, Kansas, feelings on this bill are such.
I understand.
So he is, he is not the city commission, we are the city commission, so we're giving him the authority.
But we're not voting on the issue, the legislator is.
I know, but we, but we are giving direction. But we, but we, the city commission, is giving the authority to the city manager to do it.
To send a letter.
Right. But that's, that's something that requires action of our body.
Right, which is the consensus.
But what about these things that we did email wise? Who, and, you know, right now, obviously we are on TV and we're all sitting here together, we know who, you know, who's nodding, who's not. Where are we on those other ones? We should know who said yes, who said no, shouldn't we? I, I'd be curious to know, otherwise we're running, we're running in the dark here.
Kansas State says that you don't, so.
And we don't always get all five responses on an email. Somebody may be out of town or some, you know, some, sometimes I attempt to track down. But once we get to three, that's the consensus. Should you want me to change that, then I'd do it over the board.
I don't, I don't, I don't want you to change that. I believe they should come to, I still think, you know, ultimately it should come to a vote. But, but right now, on this one, we can see who's nodding their heads. I don't know who nodded their heads this last, on, on these other ones. And I don't know if you can tell us, I don't know if you remember. But the commission, you'll write the letter, the city commission, by consensus of the city commission, we're in favor or opposed to this bill or whatever the action is. But we on the city commission don't know who, who of our body took part in it.
If we do change it, that's fine, but also this wasn't something that was just created. This is how we've been. I know, I just want to make sure that, this is, this is the precedent for how we've done it. If I can change the precedent, again, that's fine, I'll do whatever the board, I was continuing how we've done it.
Well, is there, to answer Mark's question and to find out who voted where, put it in the minutes of the meeting. Separate paragraph, we've had three consensus this week.
There you go.
So and so, so voted, so and so, so voted.
But it's not a vote, see, that's my point. Once again, it's not a consensus. At consensus, there's no record of the vote. There's a record of the vote here who's nodding their heads because we're on TV.
Right.
We know that, but.
Well, put that record in the minute, in the minutes.
Well, I, I, I don't know, I, I don't think that, that's it. I mean, we know by discussion, on, on this bill, we're discussing it. And we all kind of have an understanding of it. On these other bills that City Manager Kramer sent out to us, we know what they're about, robbing the T-Works, doing some other. robbing the T-Works, doing some other things. There's no discussion among us. And that's where the discussion should occur, should be an open meeting. And I know the timing and city manager did his job, but there's so many of these that we are, because of what's happened in the legislature, especially this year and last year, that we've had to take, write letters on that we're in opposition or in favor of. But, and I don't want to say this is an anomaly, because it hasn't been over the last two years. I mean, we've been flooded with them. We need to know where we stand, and we need to be able to discuss them. And these that we handled by email, there was no discussion whatsoever. It couldn't be, because we would violate open meetings if we discussed them.
But when he sends it out to you, he gives you a description of the House bill.
That's not a discussion among us.
No, but you don't need a discussion for consensus.
And I would argue a lot of them, or the intent of the city manager, is to forward bills that have been discussed by the commission broadly and generally when we adopt our legislative priorities for the year. So when we, when, when the commission provides a consensus on our legislative priorities, then it becomes the manager's responsibility to identify bills that go with that legislative priority, and then ask for a consensus. You're essentially saying, do you still give a consensus, or do you confirm that this is the position of the commission? And once I get three of them, that's my.
When, Mayor, you said that we don't need a discussion for a consensus. If that's true, why waste our time with this tonight? Why didn't you email this to us today? So we, we could have been out of here at 8:15 and, you know, been in the meeting. I'm, I'm just, you know, let's take this argument every bit of the way. We need, this needs to be open. Government needs to be transparent. We, because of the nature of it-
Okay, every time we get an email, everybody meets down here, well, I have a meeting. You want to do that?
No, I don't.
No, it's not, Larry. It is not.
These are things that the city, that they're asking for, the city commissioners, the representatives of the people, to take a stand, to write to our legislators. The people should know where we stand. When we do it by email, and I think at times there are necessities to do that. But I just think we need to start having these on every Tuesday.
I could continue. I could start to copy the Leavenworth Times on our letters to our legislators. They're public record anyway. They would still can say consensus, but that's, you know, I don't have any problem doing that there. I send them to everybody, our legislative bodies.
I'm, I'm in support of this. I'm in support of this. I'm, I'm just against the process that we're using.
Yeah, you're-
Because we need to stand up and be counted. And we're not being counted. We're just having consensus. That's, that's the issue I have. And very few of these, if any, can't wait till the two, next Tuesday, and they're on the agenda. And we can take a vote. We don't need a consensus. We take a vote. And a vote is much stronger than a consensus. By a vote, for example, we opposed the tax, just a second. We opposed the tax lid bill last year. It was an unanimous vote. It wasn't a consensus. We voted 5-0. Send that letter. Now we're kind of-
We have to have a consensus to put this on the agenda.
No, there's consensus to send the letter. Is that what the discussion?
But what you're saying is we have to, we have to do a consensus to put it on the agenda.
No, we don't. The city manager can put it on, city manager or the mayor, or a consensus of the commission. There's three ways to get something on the agenda. City manager has the authority to put anything on the agenda. The mayor has the authority to put anything on the agenda, and a majority of the commission has the authority to put anything on the agenda. So it does not require a consensus of us to put this on the agenda.
That's what I was asking. Thank you for clarifying that.
The city manager can put it on the agenda, or the mayor can. So, I, I'm just concerned about the process. That's my concern.
And I understand your concern, Mark. And, but I don't want to create a, create a legislative roadblock, and, and I'm thinking that's where we're going to head. I, I want some time.
Okay.
To think about this. Until then, we'll consider, continue with our consensus, the way we've been doing it until-
Unlike tonight, I'll bring the items that are a committee meeting after our next body. I'll continue to bring them to the commission if at all possible.
Right. Sounds good.
Okay.
Any other items? If not, we are adjourned.